Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the August Lebanon Plan Commission Meeting. I will call us to order and we'll do a roll call, please.
Dan Dashor. Denise Niblick. Diane Scott. Kevin Krulik. Corey Coots. Keith Campbell. Heather Schaller. Lori Gross.
Thank you very much. The other opening item I have on our agenda is the approval of minutes. Were there any questions on the minutes? And if not, I would entertain a motion. Got a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
All second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify with an eye. Eye. All those opposed, same sign. That does carry. We have no old business before us this evening, so we'll move right ahead to new business. And just for notes, we do have A through F this evening. So items A and B will be Plan Commission orders. We're going to start with O one and O two, and then we'll move on to four other items. So Mr. Bond Trager, take it away on 2025-01.
Thank you, Ms. Coots. Good evening, Plan Commission members. Plan Commission Order 2025-01 is an order of the Plan Commission that essentially approving a declaratory resolution by the Redevelopment Commission. So this is a process that we have done a number of times before. This is the step in the process in the creation of a TIF district. And so it starts with the Redevelopment Commission. The Plan Commission essentially is approving their declaratory resolution and stating that the goals that have been established in the Economic Development Plan are consistent with the plans for the city. So in this case, this first one, Rob, and correct me if I'm wrong, but essentially we're changing the name of the entity that is the designated taxpayer. So it's really, that's really the only thing this first one does. We have to go back through the process because the LLC name changed for the entity. It's still the same company. It's just they have a new real estate entity that will be the designated taxpayer. So that's what this first order 2025-01 is, is this is related to the New Cold Project, and they just have a new entity LLC name that they're, that they want to be the designated taxpayer.
Perfect. Thank you, Ben. Any questions from the Commission for Ben? So as Ben said, this is one step of many in this whole process. So if there are no questions for Ben, I would actually go ahead and entertain any motions in regards to order number 2025-01.
Make a motion that we approve order number 2025-01.
You have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify with an eye. Eye. All those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. So that's the first item. Second item is 2025-02. Ben, what you got?
Very similar. A little bit more details here, though. This is not just an entity change. This is a new TIF district, a new economic development area that's being established for a multifamily residential project on the north side of town for Spectra Development. They are looking to develop, I would say, a targeted workforce housing multifamily project. So kind of that missing middle that we don't have a lot of in Lebanon to address people that work at the hospital, like nurses or teachers, or, you know, people that might work in manufacturing facilities in the area. So this is an attempt to try to create, it is a market rate project, but they're looking for a little bit of an incentive that helps them keep those, those market, those rate rental rates in a targeted area. So again, this is the same step in the process like, like the last one. It started with the RDC to start the process of setting up the economic development area. Plan Commission, Plan Commission's responsibility is to approve that declaratory resolution indicating that it is consistent with the plans for the city, which again, it is. This is an area of the city that we expect to have residential development. And this is a project that we'd like to see happen in this area. So that is the gist of Plan Commission Order 2025-02. Again, just setting up a TIF district for another project that will be starting hopefully later this year.
Thank you, Ben. Any questions for Ben from the Commission on this one? So again, it's 2025-02. It's in reference to the Paddock Place project. Where is Paddock Place project?
It is just west of State Road 39 and 300 north on the south side of the road. That's the old Brandonburg farm that's on the south side of the road there.
There are no other question. I would entertain a motion on 25-02.
I'll make a motion to pass, approve order number 2025-02.
Got a motion to approve. Do we have a second? We've got that motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify with an eye. All those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Thank you very much. I believe those are going to be two of the quicker items of the evening. So we'll move on to item C on our agenda, which is docket number 25-32. And this is a request for vacation of public alley on Klotz-Kurzy addition. Ben, tell me more.
Thank you. So this is probably what everybody would know more is the Chicago Street Water Treatment Plant. So they are planning upgrades and expansions of that site. And as we were reviewing with our design team, we noticed a couple of items that are on your agenda here tonight that we felt like it was best to clean up while they were working on the design for this project. This first one, they want to pull up the screen for us here. This is the side of the treatment plant, and you can see that this originally was platted for residential homes. It has never been residential homes, at least not for the recent past. It has been the water treatment plant. But you can see here that there were lots platted and alleys platted. And then I'll show you on the next screen, there's this kind of weird right of way that wraps around the lot that's adjacent to the creek there. So before they started doing the design of this site, I felt like it was best to go ahead and get all those alleys vacated. They have never been used as alleys and will never be used as public alleys. So that is the process that they're going through tonight is to go through a vacation of those alleyways. So this is the original plat of this area of town and highlighted in yellow, the areas that are right now alley rights away that are running through the middle of the site, in some cases through the middles of buildings and equipment. So that is the area in question that would be vacated as part of this process. So here's just another exhibit that their surveyor put together. Everything that's in hatched area is, has been identified via survey as currently being alley rights away. So the area that's being requested to vacated and vacated to City 11 Utilities would be the area that's hatched on this, on this vacation. So similar to vacation process we've done in the past, this is a multiple step process. The Advisory Plan Commission, this body, is responsibility is to provide a recommendation to the council, and then the council then would vacate rights away via ordinance. So that is the process tonight. The first step in that process would be for the Plan Commission to provide a recommendation on this vacation. And so with that, then staff has reviewed this request for vacation of the unimproved alley rights away and recommends forwarding the vacation request to the common council with a favorable recommendation. Without a behalf, happy answering questions.
We have any questions from the Commission? I'm really curious how that tack meeting went. Were they arguing within themselves?
Yeah, yeah. The only, the only thing that might be in the way is a utility, but there's really, it's really just serving the water treatment plant. So pretty, pretty straightforward discretion as when it comes to that.
I'll just say I really appreciated all the visuals provided because reading that and trying to understand where all the alleys were around the entire property, I just say kudos.
Yes, the maps and pictures are definitely better in this case.
Any other questions from the Commission? So this is an item that does have a public hearing component. So I will officially open the public hearing on docket 25-32, which is a request of vacation of public alley and rights of way. If you have any comments, please feel free to step to the microphone. Please state your name clearly for the record and limit your comments to three minutes. This is the easy one with public hearing open this evening, I believe. Seeing no sudden movements to the microphone, I will go ahead and close that public hearing. So the public hearing has been opened and closed officially on 25-32. If there are no additional questions, I would entertain a motion. And just as a reminder, the, the role here would be for us to forward either favorably or unfavorably to the common council.
I make a motion to forward the vacation requests to the common council with a favorable recommendation.
A second.
Got a motion and a second to forward with favorable recommendation. All those in favor, please signify with an eye. Eye. All those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Docket number 25-36 is the next item up on our agenda, and this one is in regards to a rezoning request. That address looks quite familiar to me, Ben.
It's because we just talked about it. Yeah. Thank you. So again, related to the Chicago Street Water Treatment Plant, the second item we thought that it was best to clean up is the zoning for the property. So right now, and historically, it has been zoned for residential uses, similar to the plaque, the original plaque. This is currently zoned R4, which does not allow water treatment plants. So rather than trying to figure out how to relocate a water treatment plant, we thought it best to go ahead and get this zoned appropriately to allow them to continue using this property as it's currently used, and then also accommodate that expansion that they're planning to do here in the near future. So that is the request. This is before the Plan Commission here tonight is a consideration of a rezone from R4 to institutional, which is the class zoning classification we have set up for uses such as this for Lebanon Utilities and other public facilities. So that is the request before here tonight. So just a quick run through some of the staff report elements. Criteria when considering a rezone versus consistency with the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan shows this specific site as institutional because it has been the water treatment plant for so long. So it is consistent. Adjacent land uses are primarily residential. But again, we're talking about a water treatment plant that predates a lot of things in this area. So it, we don't find that there's any issues with compatibility. Desirability of land use. We certainly would like to keep that water treatment plant there and allow it to expand. So it is a desirable land use. Impact on property values. We don't see that there has been any negative impact on property values and don't anticipate any in the future. And criteria number five is responsible growth. And obviously, we do, it has been used and will be expanded to use for a city's water treatment plan in the future. And we think that that is responsible from a growth perspective. So again, then this is a multi-step process similar to the vacation request where the Plan Commission provides a recommendation to the common council, and then the common council will adopt a rezone via ordinance. So the role here tonight would be to provide a recommendation. So with that, then Lebanon Planning Staff does recommend this petition, rezone petition before by the Plan Commission to the common council with a favorable recommendation. Without a behalf to answering questions.
Thank you, Ben. Any questions from the Commission? Right. And similarly to the last item, this item does have a public hearing component. So I will officially open the public hearing on docket 25-36, which is a rezone request by the City of Lebanon Utilities. If you have any comments, please feel free to step to the microphone, state your name clearly for the record, and please limit to your comments to three minutes. Seeing no sudden movement towards the microphone, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. So the public hearing on docket 25-36 has been opened and closed. And with that, I would entertain a motion. And just a reminder, very similar to the last one, we're looking for a recommendation to the common council.
I make a motion to forward the petition to the common council with a favorable recommendation.
A second.
We've got a motion and a second for a favorable recommendation. All those in favor, please signify with an eye. Eye. All those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Thank you very much. Next docket is 25-34. This is a vacation of public rights away. And Ben, do you have some details here for us?
I do. All right. So this request is related to two public rights away county roads out in the Leap District. Let me find my correct paperwork here. Right. So this is a vacation request related to 325 West and 425 West that run through. Let me pull this up full screen here so we can see it a little bit better. What would be on this map, Site 18, this is for Project Domino, which is our next item on the agenda for the development plan. So I thought I would start first by looking at the master plan, the concept plan for the Leap District, and how it was contemplated, the transportation network would work through this area where the, the goal was to provide larger sites for some larger projects typically called mega sites. And so the site in question right is right here in the middle, this dark purple site, Site Number 18, which is 1,500 acres. So when this concept plan, this is actually a revised concept plan that was adopted a little over a year ago, I think, or right around a year ago. Site 18 was identified here as a 1,500 acre mega site. And what was contemplated, one, is that State Road 32 would be realigned further south, and actually, the curve was, was moved further west to accommodate the southern boundary of Site 18. And then there are two roads. I'll show you on the next. You can see them a little bit better. 325 West that runs through the site about right here, and 400 West that runs through the site about right here, that in the concept plan, even, even from the beginning in 2022 in the Leap District, it was, it was anticipated those roads would be vacated to accommodate this mega site, and that the transportation networks around the site would be improved and to allow for access. And actually, in this case, 250 West, which actually runs through the site about right here, is also shown as vacated. And I'll get into that discussion here in a little bit, because the original request that came in from the Project Domino design team was to vacate all three rights away. And after talking through it, we did modify that request a little bit. So again, I just kind of wanted to start a little bit of background information, just so you can recall, this probably been a little while since you looked at this land use concept plan. And the transportation network I was, was originally contemplated, anticipated those would be vacated at some point. One other thing I'd point out, a little variation, this is showing a new road 450 West, but 500 West is not shown. Obviously, 450 West doesn't exist, 500 West does. So there is a road on the west of the site. And then this, this contemplates a new 200 West that would be constructed and travel north from State Road 32. That road is not there right now currently. It is anticipated that that design may start in the next couple of years, but it's not there right now. And that kind of leads into the discussion about 250 West that we had with them. So there's a little bit of background there on, on why this discussion is, is. So this is, I will go into much more detail about the development plan for Project Domino on the next item, but I did just want to show you overall how their site lays out. So this, if you kind of look at that wedge shaped site, that's what you see highlighted in, in the green, red, yellow. And so the roads we're talking about vacating, 325 West is about right here, and 400 West is about right here. So they run directly through the middle of the developed site. So in order to accommodate their development plans, those roads do need to be vacated and, and also in, in, in concert with what was planned for the Leap District in that original land use plan. So this kind of shows original, and then what you will see is 250 West. Again, their original request that came in was to vacate all three. As we looked at their plans for the site, we saw that they weren't planning any improvements that would impact the current alignment of 250 West. And so we felt like particularly since 200 West is not there currently, it would be helpful to keep that north-south road open. It does technically go through the portions of their site that they would own both sides of the road. But because they weren't going to be impacting that area, we felt like it was best to leave that north-south access open, at least for the time being. There will probably be a discussion about this road at some point in the future once 200 West is constructed. But certainly, for the foreseeable future, that road will remain in place to allow for additional point of access to the north there. So again, you can kind of see the overall site. This is showing the new State Road 32 kind of anticipated alignment and access to their site will be provided at those, at those old 325 and 400 West areas into the site. Actually, it's probably closer to 300 on this one. So getting to the specific request, this again is the site. You can kind of see the outline here. And so what you're seeing in red are the two rights of way that the request would be to vacate. Again, here's the 325 West essentially runs from state road, existing State Road 32 alignment to Deer Creek. And then for 400 West, then it would go from State Road 32 up to 200 North, this, this whole access point. So you can see here, there's some discussion, obviously, once State Road 32 is realigned, and that construction has been completed, and it's anticipated Endot will vacate the old alignment right of way to Project Domino, to their site. At that time, then there will be discussion about vacating the remaining portions of those county roads where they exist down to what would be the new State Road 32 alignment. But all that's being requested now is for what you, is for what you see in red here that's to the north of the existing State Road 32 alignment. And kind of going back maybe to this slide a little bit, what you see in green is really where the phase one work will start. Obviously, State Road 32 goes through the middle of their site now. So the logistics of having to go back and forth across State Road 32 would be really challenging. So with the way they've phased their project, phase one is all north of existing State Road 32. So there won't be any impact to, to the existing State Road 32. So they're keeping every, every, all their activity for phase one north, and then they won't move south into this red area, the sea on here until State Road 32's been realigned, is out of the way. So just kind of walking through, one thing is that we, as, as evaluating these, certainly, there's some technical things looking with utilities. The city doesn't have public utilities on these road segments. Boone RMC does have electric facilities on one or both of these roads. The, the Project Domino design team is in discussions with Boone RMC about getting those relocated appropriately. So those conversations are ongoing. But what I want to show you here is a little bit of the broader transportation network. Certainly, we've got a couple of roads that, that we would anticipate that would go away as part of this vacation request if the council adopts that ordinance. So we wanted to look kind of at the bigger picture of transportation to the north of this area. So again, their site is highlighted in yellow. These segments that would be vacated are shown in red. And what I'll point out here is 325, it does continue north. It does turn west, though, at Big Four Trail. So it doesn't continue north of the Big Four Trail. It turns west and then continues north, and I think it's 350. This becomes 350 that you see here highlighted in blue. So that, that segment would remain. 400, same thing. It comes up here and it stops at their northern property boundary. It does not travel north of their northern property boundary. So the, the road really here is 200 North that would remain as, after this project. So looking then at the transportation network for those traveling northbound from 32 or southbound from the north, from the north, I've highlighted in blue what those routes would look like now. So you'd be looking at either going east over to, to 250 and heading south to 32, or west over to 500 and south to 32. So yes, this is going to require traversing around the site. But there are routes on county roads that allow people to get to State Road 32 safely from that perspective. And from what I understand, these roads are very low volume gravel county roads right now. So they aren't major thoroughfares to the north and south, up, up further to the north, other than essentially just in this area. The closest homes are on 200 North in this area. And so they're proximate to 500 West. And then you have a few homes, and as you come up further north, that again, their routes would be either over to the east or the west around the site. So again, that's a quick discussion about what we evaluated in terms of what impacts there might be to closing these roads. Certainly, what they've requested is in alignment with what was anticipated when the Leap District master plan was adopted by the city and by the common council. So it's not necessarily something that we didn't anticipate coming at some point. Again, I talked a little bit about the, really, the only utility discussion is with RMC about relocating some of their facilities to travel on those roads. Otherwise, other utilities did not have any issues with these. So again, similar to the last vacation request, this is a multi-step process that involves first, a recommendation from this, this body, the Plan Commission, that would be forwarded to the common council for their consideration via ordinance to adopt the vacation of these, of these county road segments. So with that, then, in review of the submitted request for the vacation of county roads, 325 West and 400 West per the exhibit, Lebanon Planning Staff recommends forwarding the vacation request to the common council with a favorable recommendation. With that, then, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ben. One question I have, just because it isn't mathin' for me in my head. So if there is a vacation of the City of Lebanon right of way of those roads, that would not inherently vacate the rights of way of the utility line for RMC, is that correct?
Correct. There, there's still likely is an easement in place for those, so that easement would have to be vacated also, in a separate process from this.
Right. But that would, I mean, they can't go in and tear the poles down.
Correct. Yes. Yeah.
Layman's terms.
Yeah. Yeah. No, it's not as simple as I'm just going and then mowing them down. They're, they're coordinating with Boone RMC about vacating those easements and getting those properly relocated before anything would happen out there.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Ben? All right. Does the applicant wish to speak on the, this portion? Not on this portion. Perfect. So then, again, with this item, this is an item that has a public hearing portion. So I will go ahead and open the public hearing on docket 24 dash, or pardon me, 25-34, which is the request for vacation of public rights of way, a portion of county roads. If you have, yeah, 325 West and 400 West. If you do have comment, please step to the microphone, state your name clearly for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes, and if possible, try not to repeat others too much.
Good evening. Brian Daggy, 2005 West, 250 North, Lebanon. I hadn't actually planned to speak tonight, but I've heard some information that I hadn't heard before, so I want to make a couple of comments. Boone County Farm Bureau always has concerns from the ag community viewpoint of when you start vacating roads, the farm traffic, large, slow-moving equipment, you vacate roads like these, you force them onto some of the more heavily traveled roads, which causes some safety concerns from our point of view. And I hope they cause some from yours as well. The thing that made me want to speak tonight is, Ben referenced that potentially 250 West might be the next road they'd look to close at some point. I'm glad they didn't do it now. But not only has that been forced farm traffic even more onto the main roads, but it would look to me like that starts to affect, have an impact on safety issues in terms of response time for ambulances, fire equipment, and things like that. So I would hope you would take those kinds of concerns into consideration and under any future requests for vacating roads. Thank you.
Mr. Daggy? Any other comments regarding docket 25-34? Seeing no other movement towards the microphone, I will go ahead and close the public hearing portion of docket 25-34. So that public hearing was opened and closed. And with that, I would, unless there are any follow-up questions from the Commission, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we submit the request for vacation of county roads, 325 West and 400 West per the exhibit, to the common council with a favorable recommendation.
We have a motion with a favorable recommendation. Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify with an eye.
Eye.
All those opposed, same sign. That All of those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Thank you very much. And that brings us, I believe, here to our last item, which is docket 25 dash 35, which we've alluded to a little bit based on that last item. So Ben, why don't you give us a little bit of information?
Very good. So this last item on the agenda is Project Domino, Orla LLC, and their development plan application for the 1,500 acre site we just discussed as part of the vacation of those two county road rights of way. Again, this is about a 1,500 acre site. If anyone will pull up the screen, I'll go through a little bit of background information on here, and then I will go through in pretty, pretty good detail the information in the staff report. As you know, we have very specific standards and high standards in the LEAP District that must be adhered to. And I do want to go through those to make sure that everybody understands we have done completed a very, very detailed review on this and had made sure that they adhere to all, at least adhere to, if not, are above and beyond the standards of the LEAP District. So what to start first by talking a little bit about the process that's this specific and unique to the LEAP District. It is, even though the development plan is an administrative review by the Plan Commission, there is a multi-step process in the LEAP District. So if you recall, the LEAP District has essentially what I call an HOA on steroids. There is a Board of Directors and an Architecture Review Committee that has members from the IEDC, who is the majority property owner out here right now. It has a representative from the city and a representative from the Boone County Commissioners that sit on it. And they review the design plans for every project in the LEAP District to make sure, one, that it adheres to the standards of the LEAP District, but then is also looking at specific things that might be unique to the project and to the site, or in some cases, the areas to make sure that they're doing things, whether it's to protect existing residents that live around the site that are remaining in the area, or or some other things where they might need to go above and beyond the design standards of LEAP District to make sure they're properly accommodating something that exists out in that site. So this project has been through the LEAP District Architecture Review Committee. We did have a few round of comments that went back to them, and then they did get their approval from that Architecture Review Committee before submitting their development plan review to the city. So that is in place. And now the second step of the process is an objective review by city staff and by the Plan Commission of the design standards of the LEAP District and ensuring that this project meets those design standards. So I did want to kind of go through some of the things from the staff report. The first thing that I will talk a little bit about is the use itself. So this is a 1,500 acre data center campus. This is in the LEAP District. The use itself, the whether the use is permitted has already been determined. The Lebanon Common Council a few years ago adopted the LEAP District design standards that also have a list of permitted uses within those zoning districts. This is, let me find the correct terminology, because I do want to repeat it for you. Got to get past all the TAC comments that are here first. This proposed use falls under the use category in the LEAP District that is data center, including computer infrastructure providers, data processing, and related services. That use within the LEAP District mega site sub-district is permitted. So this discussion tonight isn't necessarily about a subjective review of a use and whether it should be permitted. It is permitted. That was, that's a legislative function of the common council to determine which uses should be permitted, which zoning districts, and they've already made the determination that this is a permitted use on this site. So this discussion tonight is an objective review of their design standards and how they've designed their site, not necessarily a subjective discussion about the use itself. This is not a rezone. This is not a use variance. It is a permitted use. So our review was focused then on the design standards for the site and making sure that they meet those design standards in the LEAP District. So I will walk through those. So again, just a quick review here. This is the overall site. State Road 32, again, that the curve that as you're heading out west goes through the middle of their site, as we've discussed on the last item. The design is already underway to relocate State Road 32 to the southern end of their site and basically move that curve about a couple of miles to the west to accommodate this this site. Again, as we just talked about, here's the section, here's the segment of County Road 400 West and 325 West that they'd requested to vacate. So that kind of gives you a little bit of the parameters of the site. Again, there's 250 Weses that meanders through the eastern end of their site. Again, this is 1,500 acre site, so it is a very, a very significant site. So I will, again, just kind of remind everybody of how they're intending to move forward. Assuming a positive consideration of the Plan Commission this evening, they do have already submitted their mass earthwork plans, and they're hoping, once we can get all those things reviewed, all those technical reviews completed, they will be starting earthwork out on this site within the next month or two. They do have some additional reviews and approvals they need from County Surveyors Office for drainage, relocations, things like that, but those things are already underway. So again, as a reminder, from an infrastructure perspective, they will be starting in the green area, which is essentially a majority of the property that is north of existing State Road 32. And then in terms of Phase One buildings, you have a collection of data center buildings that are right here, right in the center of the site, and then their administrative and some of their support buildings are over here on the western end of the site. So that's where building construction will start. But they have to do all this earthwork in this area, really, to start getting their detention ponds and drainage and all those things in to accommodate those buildings. So there were, this is where the majority of the activity will start in this Phase One was in this green area. They do have a second series of buildings that would be part of a subsequent phase, and then they will then move north into this yellow area. And by that time, based on project schedule and construction schedule, then State Road 32, that realignment will have been completed, and then they'll move down into future phases that would then be south of what would be existing State Road 32. So in total, there are, I believe it is 15 buildings, yeah, 15 buildings on the site. Of those 15 buildings, there are 12 data center buildings. They basically build them in pairs and then have all the cooling equipment and other related utility equipment that runs in between the two buildings. So you see there is essentially a pair here, and then there are three pairs down in this red area, and you've got two pairs up here. So there are six total data center building pairs, and they will build them simultaneously in those pairs over the next several years. I'll let the applicant talk a little bit more about what their phasing and schedule looks like. When you include those 12 data center buildings, there is a network building, a logistics warehouse building, and an admin building, which is farthest to the west here. It's 15 total buildings. The combined square footage is just a little less than 5 million square feet on the on the total acreage when you add those together. So I'll move forward now and then talk a little bit about the LEAP District standards. Again, this is a very large site, so it's a little bit difficult to see the complete detail. But again, just kind of walking through, you can see the pairs of buildings as they exist here. Their detention is primarily provided along the creek. That's the low, the low spot. But they do have detention that runs throughout the site that basically would daisy chain their drainage over to the creek. And looking at those LEAP District standards, we have a couple of different things that apply here. There is a front building setback that's associated with State Road 32, and we applied this on the new alignment, and that setback is 400 feet off of the new State Road 32. So we just show here that the the first building that's closest to State Road 32 is this one right here, and it's about 920 feet from what would be new State Road 32, this distance here. So they are, they're about double, are a little bit more than double what the required minimum setback is off of that new State Road 32. So they do meet that front setback stem standard. The parking standard is 200 feet off of new State Road 32. I believe the closest parking is actually associated with that same building, and it's about 620 feet away from State Road 32. So it's about three times what the setback is off State Road 32. Moving to front building setback off of 200 North, which is the north end of their site. Again, they've got a 400-foot building setback and a 200-foot parking setback. They do meet those again on that north property line. Build the closest building is 410 feet away from 200 North, and the closest parking is 300, approximately 300 feet away from 200 North. So again, meet those setbacks there. Internal building setbacks. So we do have a couple of areas where there are properties that aren't part of this development. So there is a small house that's here, although I do understand that they may be negotiating with this owner to sell this. It is still an existing residential use that needs to be accommodated. So you've got a small house here, and then this farm property that you see that sits here. And so those are considered existing uses that require an internal building setback associated with them. And that setback is required to be 400 feet as well. And so if you look at, I think the closest buildings are these buildings that are right around this home here, but they are 450 feet away. So it more than meets that internal building setback. And then parking, internal parking setback, again, similarly, there is a 200-foot setback, and they do, they do meet, I think, again, the closest parking is the admin parking lot, which is right here. And it's approximately 350 feet away from that existing residential use. So again, more than meet all of those minimum setback requirements. Natural corridor. This is the first time we've had an opportunity to review the requirements associated with natural corridors. In this case, it is the legal drain that meanders across the north, their northeastern property line. So the goals of the LEAP District really when it as it relates to these existing natural stream corridors is to attempt to renaturalize them. So including a significant buffer off of the edges of the creeks and then essentially planting natural grasses and then trees and shrub plantings to try to renaturalize that area. And so with that, the natural corridor does have a setback for buildings and parking, which would be 500 feet. And then if you've got buildings over 75 feet tall, then that setback does increase. Their tallest building does not exceed 75 feet. So they have a 500-foot setback from that creek corridor. And then the closest building is this one you see here right in the middle of the site. It's about 900 feet away from that stream corridor. So again, they more, they're they're almost double what the setback is from that stream corridor, as you see there. And then I'll get into the landscape and as it relates to that stream corridor here in a little bit. Maximum building height in the mega site area is 250 feet. Their tallest building is just a little over 41 feet. So they're, again, their buildings are not, they've got a significant square footage, but they're all single-story buildings except for the admin building. So they're not, they don't have a significant height to them. Maximum lot coverage in the mega site area is 70%. And they're at about 37%. So there still is quite a bit of natural turf area on the site. They're they're well under the maximum lot coverage area that's permitted in that LEAP District. So looking then at parking, let me, let me get back here so I have access to some of these tools here. So I'll zoom in a little bit. There, there isn't a massive, single parking area within the site. Their total permanent employment, oops, just went too far, is about 50 full-time employees for Phase One. So it's not, it's not an area where they have a significant amount of employment, but they do have quite a, they have subcontractors that come and go quite a bit. So let me, for some reason, let's think side that I want to ask AI assistants something. But their, their main parking lot area has about 400 spaces, just again, due to how many subcontractors they come, and that's associated with this admin building you see was over on the west part of the site. So there's a little over 407 spaces there. And then at each one of these data center buildings, they do have small parking lots associated with each one of those as well. So in the overall site, they have about 467 spaces, most of them as admin parking. Actually, I think I might be misreading this. I think the admin parking is actually, that's not 400. I think that 400 is actually split for this, the parking as each of the data center buildings, too. So again, there's not one, this is the largest parking lot, but they do have small parking lots that intersperse throughout the site as people are doing work at each one of the data center buildings. They do have a small parking lot associated with each one. One other thing that I didn't point out on the overall site in terms of the layout, as you can imagine, this is a highly secured site. So they have a main substation that Wabash Valley will be installing that is here labeled as provider substation. Each one of these data center buildings has their own smaller substation that basically runs around the perimeter of the developed site. And so then they actually have a security fence that runs between those those substations and then what would then become some of their data center equipment. So they're, really, really, everything is enclosed within a, within a high-security fence, other than the substations associated with each one of these data centers. So you can kind of see there's a line with with circles that that's showing where that that fence line is and where it'll run as it goes around the site to secure the site. They do have two access points on the new, what would be new State Road 32, here at the eastern end, and then their their main entrance up to the admin buildings here at this western end. And these are roundabouts that are being designed by NDOT as part of the State Road 32 project. So that just kind of walks through parking. And maybe just to kind of back up a little bit in terms of some of the overall, certainly, this is going through a very comprehensive and detailed drainage review. I talked generally about how it works, but they are required to meet our, the stormwater ordinance from the city of Lebanon to ensure that it meets all of the runoff requirements and stormwater quality requirements, and to make sure that, again, it's not causing any adverse impacts on neighboring properties. So they are going through that, that, that process right now. In terms of utilities, they are going to be served by public utilities, both water, sanitary sewer. And then again, I mentioned Wabash Valley, they're bringing a transmission line to the site to make sure that they have adequate power. They have already received a pre-allocation for water for their project. If you recall, we've got two phases of our project with Citizens to bring water to the city of Lebanon. The first would be in January of 2027, and that brings an additional 2 million gallons per day of water to the city of Lebanon. And they have received an allocation as part of that, that Phase One. Phase Two of the Citizens project is in January 2028 that brings an additional 8 million gallons per day. So 10 million total between those two phases, and they've already received a pre-allocation from that second phase as well. So they have already been provided allocations for their needs in those first couple of years. And then they're working with Lebanon Utilities on their ramp-ups for subsequent years after that to make sure that they can be accommodated as well. But they do already have out pre-allocations from City of Lebanon in those first two phases. And as those, the Phase One project is already designed. Actually, some of the materials are already starting to be staged out there as you're going west on State Road 32, to make sure that there's adequate utilities for that site. And there is still allocations available for other projects in both of those phases as well. So it's, it's not, it's not all allocated to these big projects. So again, public utilities have been determined. They're working to make sure they're adequately provided to the site, and that is ongoing. But it will be provided with public utilities. So kind of going back, just looking at a couple other details, and I'm sure you guys have questions after I get through some of this. There's, there'll be details that I'm sure I will miss that you'll have more questions about. But let me, actually, let me zoom out one more. Of lighting, again, just to kind of remind the Plan Commission, we have very high lighting standards within the LEAP District. There is a group, the International Dark Sky, that created a series of lighting standards to ensure that there's not basically light pollution and make sure that there is strategies in order to make sure that while there is proper security lighting for places like this, it doesn't create any adverse impacts. And so we have reviewed that. I'll show you the slide here in a second. You won't be able to see it because the site's so big and the numbers are so small. But essentially, what it, what it'll show you is around their site perimeter, the foot candle measurements is zero all the way around the perimeter site. So they've made sure that there is not going to be any light emitting actually at the property lines, much less spilling on neighboring properties. That doesn't mean you won't see a light source, but it does mean by the time you get to the property lines, there, there won't be an actual detectable measurement of light at the property line. So again, they've met all of our lighting standards and make sure that that, make sure that there isn't any adverse impacts. And certainly, we'll work with any neighbors moving forward. If there's determined that there's something that needs to be addressed, we will certainly do that if we, if, if that, if that takes place. So landscaping, again, this is one I'll go through in quite a bit of detail because there's a lot to it. And again, is this overall site, all this hatching is referring to all the turf areas. So it's a little bit hard to read, but I do want to point out a couple of things that they've highlighted in color. So the first one is the roadway corridor buffer, which runs along the new State Road 32 corridor. This roadway green belt actually is required on 32 and on 200 North. It requires a green belt of 160 feet along those roadways. In that green belt, the minimum requirement is a mound of six to eight feet in height, and then natural tree groupings distributed evenly along that buffer, that green belt. So for every 200 lineal feet, the green belt should, shall include 10 deciduous trees, four evergreen trees, four and four ornamental trees or large shrubs, and then a mixture of native tall grasses and prairie mixes. So this is one where I wanted to point out that the Architecture Review Committee did have comments, and the comments were relating to protecting some of the homeowners that are actually south of what would be the new 32 and then up on 200 North, and requested that the heights of those mounds be increased from the minimum of six to eight feet to 10 to 12 feet. So you're going to see a mound that's almost double in height to make sure that there is proper visual screening for those neighboring property owners. And that relates to both this purple buffer, buffer, green belt on State Road 32, and this yellow buffer that's here up here on 200 North. They've increased that mound height from six to eight feet to 10 to 12. So they are, they are increasing and doing more than what's the minimum required. I mentioned also the internal residential, this property here that's in this light blue. And there is a green belt required around that that's very similar to the roadway green belts. Again, 160 feet. And in this case, they will also provide a 10 to 12-foot tall mound with landscaping around that, that internal residential as well. So again, and then in terms of parking lot landscaping, they have provided all the required parking lot landscaping, all the parking lots. And then, so let me scroll through. I'll just get, rather than showing you all 30 pages of the detailed landscape plans, I'll show you just a couple of snippets here. So this is an example, I guess not example, this is the landscape plan for the buffer on to, on 200 North. So you can kind of see your, you can see underlying, there is the 10 to 12-foot mound that runs and meanders along that, that north property line. And this just shows you a snippet of how many, how many trees and shrubs are required. It is going to be a very heavily landscaped 10 to 12-foot mound along that 200 North that provide the protection and screening for many that provide the protection and screening for many neighbors, any, any dissimilar use neighbors that you might see on 200 North. So that provides you an example there. And then I think I've got. This is showing you again that it's a little hard from the scale, but that is 100 and 160 to 200 feet wide right there. So this is a pretty big area. This is showing that 10 to 12 foot mound and landscaping that will be provided around that, that internal residential, that home that's around that west part of the property. So you're kind of seeing what the plan is for how to provide the screening and protection for that area. I've got on State Road 32. Oops, now it decides it wants to. So this is showing you in that, that buffer with the mound and landscaping along the State Road 32 corridor. This is a 10 to 12 foot mound with, as you can see, significant trees and additional landscaping to provide that screening along State Road 32. This is their east, eastern entrance. And actually, the architecture review committee did want them to wrap the landscaping to the north. So again, looking at scale from the road or from this, this property line here to this is 400 feet. So this mound and landscaping will go back 400 feet from, or more than 400 feet from New State Road 32. Again, just trying to make sure to provide some appropriate screening of the site from some of the residential homes that will still, will be remaining to the south of 32 over here. And then finally, I do want to spend a little bit of time because this was actually probably one of the more significant discussions we had with the Project Domino design team was the, was the landscape plan for the detention ponds and the stream corridor buffer. Because really, again, as I mentioned, the goals of the master plan for the LEAP district was really to try to renaturalize those areas and incorporate detention and stormwater management within those stream corridors. So this is an area, actually their original plan, that, that Wabash Valley transmission line kind of followed the creek on this side of the creek. And really, and obviously power lines, those power companies don't really like landscaping on their power lines. So it really was making it difficult to really meet the standards of, of the LEAP district and how this, this renaturalization was intended to happen. So through multiple different discussions, both with us and the Project Domino team, and then with their team in Wabash Valley, they were able to relocate that transmission line to a different location, allowing them then to really naturalize those, those detention ponds and the stream corridor buffer. So this is just a snippet and exhibit of one area of the detention basin. As this is the large detention base on the site, really looking to try to naturalize the, the edge of that, do number plantings along the edges of that and provide other naturalized landscape to the detention pond. But then again, also trying to renaturalize that stream corridor area here. So they've, they've got a series of ground cover plantings that would be appropriate for an area like this. And then also a series of tree and shrub plantings, again, appropriate to renaturalize in that stream corridor buffer. This is just showing us, I say a small area, this is a significant area because of the scale. But this treatment will run along the entire length of that stream corridor across that northeast part of the site. This is just kind of showing you a small exhibit of what that will look like along that entire length, which is a couple thousand feet, if I'm not mistaken. So bringing through that. So in terms of a couple of other items that we look at as part of any development plan, the first is signage. This is actually a site that's highly secure. They don't have significant signage. What they do have though, is a single monument sign at their primary entrance by their admin building, which is essentially just their, their address. And so that's, that would be located here at their, basically their guard shack to get into the site. And this is kind of showing you example, they're really trying to keep the signage to a very, to a real minimum out here as it's a very, very secure site. So again, just a monument entry sign that has the address. And then they do have internal signage kind of wayfinding throughout the site. As we talked about it, is there is a 15 different buildings on site. So they do have interior signage that won't be seen from any public area that's on the site. But again, from, from a public perspective, this is the only monument sign that you would really possibly see. And it's, and it's very minimal from that perspective. So again, I mentioned the lighting plan. This is, this is one segment of the lighting plan on the north end of the site. What they, what their lighting contractor has done is located where lights would be along these perimeter roads and around the buildings and provided lighting, I anticipated lighting measurements. I can zoom in for you, I have to zoom in pretty far so you can really see. And so what they've done there is you can see where there are lighting measurements associated with these areas, like point four foot candles. But what I did want to point out is what I kind of summarized earlier is that when you get to the property line. Uh oh, this is going to freeze up on me. Did something funny on me, that is a big file. When you get to the property line, you will see that all the foot, anticipated foot candle measurements are 0.0. So they have been able to make sure to provide something that will minimize any potential impacts. Yeah, it's definitely done something. So final thing, building design. And just a quick summary here, the buildings do in terms of the materials, these are insulated metal panels, which is a permitted building material type in the LEAP district. And what we've done then is for these buildings, again, I mentioned, these are all 41 feet, four inches tall. So they all have a similar height and that's at the peak. So these are not very, these are not significantly tall buildings. But what we've done with them then is, is to make sure that while they are large, generally warehouse buildings, they do have some architectural features that create interest. And so they've added some of these overhangs that would create shadows. They've also made sure to incorporate different colors into the panels, just to create some visual interest. And then also provided enhanced entryway areas to the buildings. Again, just to try to provide some visual interest to these buildings. Again, these are all 360,000 square foot buildings, essentially big, large data warehouses. But they have been able to provide some designs on these buildings that add shadows, add breaks, changes in colors, which is what's encouraged in the LEAP district in order to meet those standards. So, and this was a specific request for both the ARC and from planning staff to make sure that they've incorporated these things. So this is a modification they made based on direction from the architecture review committee and from staff. So I'll just quick scroll through a few of these, this, this is one of the essentially data buildings. Give you an idea what that would look like in the, in the site. About done with this large file. Again, just another one of those data buildings. Again, you can kind of see that similar architectural that their architect has added to the design. It's another one of the net, showing the network buildings that are more internal to the site. These actually wouldn't be visible even from the perimeter. These are more internal to the site. But again, you can see that they've incorporated some of those similar roof designs, just to add some visual interest and some shadows. And then again, another one of the network buildings to the internal of the site. And then finally, the admin building. This gives you a little bit of view with that admin building. Again, I mentioned this, this is the only one that really, it's two stories. But again, it's not any taller, this is 41 feet as well. So again, they've got an enhanced entryway area, covered area on that building, really to add some architecture to the building. So again, as I mentioned, we've reviewed all of these things with them. We have provided some very specific comments about the design that they have addressed. They've been very responsive to all the comments from both the architecture review committee and from staff going through this review. And at that, this point, we have determined that they have met all the standards. There is one minor thing that I put in here related to the, the parking lot related to the admin building. There is a standard that requires for parking lots over a certain size that a portion of the parking spaces are essentially covered with solar canopies, just to provide some alternative energy. I couldn't, I couldn't tell in the details where that had been provided. So I just put that into condition that they would address that, that design requirement and any final modifications they make to the site. So with that then, I think I've gone through quite a bit of this. Final staff recommendation, as I mentioned, this was an objective review of standards. In review of the submitted development plan as presented, Lebanon planning staff finds compliance with the unified development ordinance requirements for the subject site. Staff recommends approval of the subject development plan conditioned, conditioned on the following conditions. First, tac comments, and that would be that the applicant adequately addressed any remaining City of Lebanon Technical Advisory Committee comments prior to application for any building permits or site improvements. They have already responded to a number of those, but there are some, a few outstanding things that they're still working on with drainage review, county surveyor, those sorts of things, but they have addressed a lot of those comments already. Second would be stormwater approval, and that would be that the applicant receives formal drainage approval from the City of Lebanon Board of Public Works and/or the Boone County Surveyor as necessary prior to application for any building permits or site improvements. And finally, and this is what I just mentioned, the site plan modification, that would be that the applicant should provide solar canopies over a minimum of 25% of the parking spaces within the admin building parking lot. With that, I'd be happy to answer questions as I'm sure there are some.
Question for you, I appreciate all the details and the visuals, and that's a lot of information. But my question is, if I was tracking everything correctly, I'm curious about the visibility of the buildings to the general public.
Yeah.
Will they be very visible at all, given what you described about the perimeter and the security, the fencing and all of that?
They should not be terribly visible. You just look at the, the geometry. If you've got, if you've got somebody that's across the street, there's a 10 to 12 foot mound and then a 40 foot building that's several hundred feet away from that. You kind of look at the angles of, of the viewpoints. It's likely there's not going to be a lot that you will see. Now, will you see it? Sure, you're going to know what's back there. But they've done a lot to be able to really restrict to those viewpoints as much as possible. So there wouldn't be a lot to see. This is a little different than Eli Lilly. Eli Lilly's got some buildings over 100 feet tall that you're going to see no matter what. These buildings are only 40 feet tall. They're actually technically allowed in our business park without any of these additional landscape buffer standards. So yeah, there, there will be, it will be difficult really to see much in that site based on just looking at the geometry of those mounds versus the buildings.
What I kind of suspected, I just was curious for clarification, thank you.
I have a question as far as this many basins and how it kind of works for maintenance of those long term? Because obviously that's something that will need maintenance to be dredged, I assume at some point, 10 years longer, maybe shorter. But how does that work as that's going to change the runoff, right? So I just didn't know if that's something that's monitored or how that works.
Yeah, so, so the actual drain, the creek itself is, will remain a county regulated drain. So they will still have jurisdiction over the actual creek itself and responsibility for maintenance of that creek. Anything that's on their site is private. It's not a public drainage system. So the responsibility for maintenance will fall then to the property owner. Certainly they'll work with the city stormwater department. Kevin can elaborate on this some. If, if we ever discover any issues, the stormwater department will work with them to make sure they are corrected. But the responsibility of maintenance would fall to the property owner for anything that's, that's private on their site.
To elaborate on that, they're, they're required to, to execute an operations and maintenance agreement for all their stormwater.
Those, most of those are dry basin, correct? So they, they're not actually holding.
They would be wet, yeah, they're wet. I think just with the high water table out here, I don't know that you could have, you couldn't dig very far without discovering some surface water.
And then I had another question about some clarification with fencing being such a secure site. Is the fence planned on the other side of Birm or is it closer to all of the buildings? And kind of, you know, what would that look like?
Let me kind of go back, that's a good question. Back so. Looking at the overall site. So in all areas, the mound will be what is most adjacent to the property lines and the security fencing is all behind that. So if we look here, say like on State Road 32, the mound will run along that property line. From there, then you have what would be essentially the substations associated with each one of these data centers. Those are on the back sides of the mounds. And then between those substations then and the data center campus, that's where the fence will be. So in most places, the fence is probably at least 400 feet away from the property line. And there will be a mound on the property line side of the fence. So all that stuff is contained behind that, the buffer yard areas.
And can you maybe elaborate on that? Would you characterize the fencing as decorative in nature or is it? What is the fencing?
I think it's probably a little more utilitarian than that, if you will. I mean, this is, I mean, we, we're still working with them on some of those details that they finalized. But I would say it's, it's probably a little bit more utilitarian than that right now. But they will have to meet the fencing standards of our ordinance and of the LEAP district. So there are some limitations there, but I think again, it's, it's something that's very internal to the site, not visible from the property lines really in any location, so.
Ben, I appreciate all the information. Can you answer some of the questions I had when I sent them to you too? I appreciate all that, that's pretty much been answered. I got one question right now, I'm going to say, with all the utilities, we're basically just, we're the water supplier. Lebanon utilities is.
Yes, yes.
Just like we are with Lilly and it's already been allocated. Just hypothetical here, we're going, let's say if the water resource becomes dwindled, bottlenecked, we can't put out that much, there's not that much coming into the city at some point in time. Who gets priority?
So we could never put ourselves in a situation where we quote unquote, run out of water. We can only allocate the water that's available to us. So when I mentioned the, the, those two phases, so right now our system is four and a half million gallons per day. We've allocated essentially up to that point. We cannot allocate beyond that, I Dem won't let us.
I'm not talking about allocation, I'm, I'm talking catastrophe, something happens with the water supply. All of a sudden, we're used to getting 10 million gallons a day. All of a sudden, our supplier says, nope, sorry, there's some issue down the line. You can only have seven, you know, or something like that. How does that work?
Yeah, I mean, that would be, that would be a catastrophic situation. I mean, because we're talking about underground water sources.
We're talking, we're talking.
We, we are the supplier, and if that happens, I'm fairly confident we're probably not operating computers. We're in much dire straits, so.
I'm still, I'm still staying it though, I'm sorry.
It's gallons that are provided, not percentage of availability, right? So that's allotted in the gallons amount, I guess is.
Percentage, it's not the actual gallon.
No, it's gap, it's gap.
Yeah, their allocation is based on how many gallons they've requested, not a percentage of the total. So that they have, they have limitations on how much. That's why we're, we're definitely working through it to make sure we've got those averages proper.
I'm still saying, I mean, let's say all of a sudden, we don't have enough water for all of our citizens and they're taking more than what we have. And because we're having to allocate all of theirs and they're saying, oh, sorry, we have to cut you off to, you know, you guys, your households can only use 100 gallons a day. Sorry, but Meta and Lilly get all their stuff.
Yeah, I, we're, we're talking about a major what if that hasn't happened. And I, I don't know the situation, how that could happen. Again, we can't allocate more than we're being provided. So if, if, and frankly, if citizens runs out of water, there's much bigger problems because they supply all of, a pretty, a good portion of Indianapolis. And they've got multiple water supply areas. So they've got like four or five or six different places where they get water from.
Water supply and there's potable water supply, there's a difference. So I mean, it has to be able to be.
I mean, all, all of their water that comes out of the ground is being treated and provided as drinkable water in their system.
I just, I just wonder, because I mean, if you take the country in general, I mean, we're putting up so many of these data centers and everything else.
I, I think, I think the good thing in the Midwest is our supplies of water are more resilient than that. So out west, they're using supplies of water that aren't as resilient as underground water supply. So the good thing is that we've got water coming from multiple different sources, which again, makes us more resilient. That's the same reason like a site like this, you want water coming from multiple different areas. You want power coming from multiple different areas. So they're not down, but the same thing about our entire systems, our city's water supply. We got water coming from right now, two different sources already. And this will actually, I don't know, citizens has Kevin, what, five different water supplies, six? It's probably more than that.
I, I couldn't even speak to it, yeah.
So yeah, I mean, I mean, we could certainly play the what if game, but there could be 27 other what ifs that have, have nothing to do with this project that may affect the water supply too.
Just, just that in general, I mean, why wouldn't the city, at least when they do these water allocations, have something in there that says that, said, you know, you are allocated this, but in a catastrophic state, you may be dialed down to a certain degree, you know, I mean.
I think it actually probably works the other way. We're basically guaranteeing that they, that anybody who's been allocated water will get their water. And that goes to a single residential home as it, as same as it does to Project Domino.
If. I'm, I'm, I'm struggling how exactly to answer the question. You know, a, a water system, our system, the regional system, the, the citizen system that we will be connecting to, it's, it's a system where it's, it's, you know, it's a loop system with, with multiple connection points and sources feeding it. And then it's pressurized. So it's, I mean, yes, I guess in a, in a certain manner of speaking, there are valves to each user. But you're sort of saying, if, if there is a catastrophic problem with the water system, are we going to go out and turn your neighbor's house on, believe yours on, and then the next neighbor's off? And we, I don't.
I don't mean turn off, I just mean we all dial down a percentage of what we're allowed to use.
That's where I guess I'm going is that if, okay, if there's a major break in the main and there's just no water coming through, that's, that's one problem. You're saying if, if the flow rates that we're able to produce or the pressure we're able to reduce, to produce is, is depleted, well, the whole system gets depleted, right? So the, the pressure drops, the flow rates drop in the whole system. So the, the pressure drops, the flow rates drop, and the whole system. I, I think that's more what you would see in a catastrophic system, is we, we might not have the pressure, or we might have, have the flow rates, we might not have the flow rates to fill our towers and produce the pressure. What happens in those sorts of situations is you normally see restrictions on, you can't water your yard anymore. You know, I don't think you see, I, I'm struggling to think of a scenario where a city has picked and choose who gets to turn their water on and who doesn't. I think more likely what happens is you just.
There are certain states that have, and I mean, Texas would be the primary example I'm thinking of because of what they do now.
So just in the interest of time and the purview of this specific board.
Health and safety, that's why, health and safety is part of Planning Commission, that's why I'm asking the question.
Correct, yeah, I understand, but some of these questions and the what-ifs are, you know, very detailed into some of the comprehensive planning coming through Lebanon Utilities. So I would recommend partnering, especially with the, the utility board and some of those individuals, to ask for some of those contingency plans on what if there is a catastrophic failure, what if there are those items? So I'm not saying that you don't have a valid question or, or point. I'm saying I don't believe this board is necessarily the purview that can talk about those catastrophic failures.
That's true. I agree with that. But I'd say it's still health and safety.
Yeah, that's, 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 that's an issue that, yeah.
I get, I get that. I'm just, just to bring us a little bit.
Yeah. And what I would say is if there's a catastrophic failure like that, it doesn't matter whether this project was approved or not. Everybody's going to be affected in some way. Like Kevin said, it's usually pressure, not necessarily how much. And so that's not going to be specific to any one property or one site. That affects the whole system. So that, we, we could approve 20 projects like this, and, and that may or may not happen. And we could approve no projects like that, and it still could happen and still impact everybody else. So that's, this, this project by itself does not cause or create any larger potential for something like that to happen.
Right. And that's, you know, that's.
Priorities.
Yep. And that's, you know, again, kind of the purview of the utility board and how that's managed. But great points, great questions. Other questions, comments from the commission?
Couple of questions. Ben, I guess just for the benefit of the room, have they obtained and/or requested any variances related to design?
They have not, they have not. Actually, we, we told them from the first meeting that the intention was for them to meet all the standards of a LEAP district, and they were able to do that.
And do you feel the substations and the, the electrical system, which is primarily overhead, also meets any, any visibility standards and setbacks from, that may, may apply?
Yes, yes, it does. Certainly, the overhead power is going to be visible as they are now. But yes, all the, everything that they've done meets all the standards associated with those types of uses.
And I, I guess also for the, for the benefit of the public, reading the noise, the noise study that was prepared and provided in our packet, I found one reference into there that, to six to, or eight-foot mounds. And you mentioned all mounds are now increased to 10-foot associated with the Architecture Review Committee.
Yeah, yeah, I believe, actually, I take, yeah, I think, I think all mounds except for, they, they're all taller than that. I think they've done some modifications after the ARC reviews since their consultant had started that study. So they, they made sure that all the, everything they reviewed was very, and maybe I should just talk a little bit about their noise study they did. So they actually went out, and what we've told them in terms of the standard from the ordinance, it basically says you can't, and your, your noise emitting source can't increase more than five decibels over the ambient noise conditions already on the site. What we told them is use the daytime ambient noise conditions in order to make that determination. And so what they did then is they basically took monitoring equipment out and did, and went basically a ring around the site and took those ambient noise levels. And then they, they have a modeling system that can run basically all their noise emitting sources through this model and determine based on where they made, they, they determine those points around the site, how much their, their noise emitting sources would change that ambient noise condition. Actually, what they found was really positive, actually, their, their, their noise emitting sources are actually below the current ambient noise conditions in most areas around the site. So their primary noise sources are the, the cooling fans, as we say with the cooling equipment. And they said what they did is when they ran their model, they assumed that those fans are running 100% full speed all the time, which it likely won't, particularly at nighttime when it's cooler, they won't have to run them. They said probably most likely it'll average about 85% capacity on those fans. But they did run their model assuming 100% all the time, and were able to determine that it, actually their noise emissions would actually be lower than what the ambient conditions are during the daytime. Again, all, most of those noise emitting sources are central to the site, and when you look at the scale of the site, they're thousands of feet from the closest existing home. So between the distance and the mounds and the landscaping, it does provide some buffer to what the noise sources would be. So yeah, they, they did do a very detailed noise study to make sure that they were able to meet those conditions.
Yeah, and I, and I think as, as I read the study, the study references a shorter mound than what's, what's around the site. So I think actually the results would even be better, more beneficial to the ambient noises.
I do have one more question, and it may or may not be really relevant, but this conversation made me think about it. Is this a data center type of business, for lack of a better word, that will be operating 24/7?
Yes.
I presume that because the nature of a data center, but.
Yes. This, this is a type of center that needs to be operational 24/7, 365.
One more thing with the noise, since we talked about that plan. I thought that it also said in there that would include generator backup as well, needs to be within that. So even if there's a power outage, they have to fall within that because of the city ordinance, correct?
Any questions, everybody? Thank you. Others from the commission? Would the applicant care to speak on this particular item?
Good evening, everybody. My name's John Flagspirn. I'm with Olson as a civil engineer, representing the Project Domino team. Ben did a really great job of articulating our proposed development. So I just have a few things to add. In addition to working with the planning department, we have been working with the city on the vacations to the 325 and 400 street right-of-ways. Boone County, we've been working with them constantly on the existing drain tiles, vacating the ones out there, and relocating the ones we have to relocate, as well as the stormwater requirements. In addition to Lebanon, we're working with Boone County to make sure we meet all their stormwater requirements as well. I know this is just going to the Plan Commission now, but this has been a, a site that's been coordinated for almost a year now with Lebanon Utilities for our water and sewer needs, and Wabash Power for our power, power needs. In addition to utility needs, we have conducted traffic analysis reports and coordinated that with the SR32 team to confirm there's no adverse impacts to that SR32 redesign. As you guys can see, the majority of our traffic's going to be connected to that SR32, so we've been heavily coordinating with them. I know sometimes there's concerns with queuing on these larger sites. The plan's not up, but if you recall from Ben's plan, our secure perimeter fence and interior building design is all pretty far into the building. So our connection to SR32 is actually, it's about a quarter to a mile away from, you know, our secure perimeter fence and where the guardhouse will be and where all the parking will be. So we don't anticipate any kind of traffic queuing in those roundabouts. I know there was a question on the fencing. I can speak to our typical basis of design. Typically, it's a black steel mesh anti-climb fence. But as Ben said, our, our fencing team's going to be working with the city on providing greater detail, make sure we, we meet those codes. Like I said, Ben articulated all pretty well. I just wanted to hit on a couple of facts and add some clarity to some of your guys' questions, and look forward to hearing what you guys think.
I just want to make a comment that I, I haven't seen, of course, all the details. I know there's going to be more details coming out with the grand plan of things, but employee quality of life is very important to me, and keeping in mind sidewalks, places to eat outside, things like that during different shifts, changeovers. So I didn't see a whole, I know you're probably not doing a nature path going around the perimeter and things like that, but that is something that I think is very aligned with what, what I would like to see, at least in Lebanon. I can't speak for everybody, so keeping in mind for people to be able to commute in, biking, things like that. So just want to put that out there as a comment for design.
Okay, yep. And we have coordinated with the Plan Commission on providing bicycle parking per UDO codes, and have been coordinating the SR32 trail. So we have been starting that coordination, but so long ways to go on our end to finalize that design.
Other questions or comments from the commission?
Question, I mean, do you plan on doing any like future power generation onsite?
That's not really my area of expertise. I'd have to kick that, yeah. I know we have a specific power team that kind of works with Wabash hand-in-hand to figure out what they can provide and what we need to make sure we're within those, those
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Maybe just Dan, I appreciate that comment. I, I actually made that comment to him. There's not a requirement necessarily for alternative energy out there, but I did mention to him, they have a whole lot of square footage of, of roof that's out there that could be a, a possibility for solar installations. So again, while it's not necessarily in the current plans, we've definitely encouraged them to look at as this, as this thing builds out, because there, there are a number of opportunities on 1,500 acres where you might be able to find some alternative, alternative energy options.
I notice, I know with these hyperscale, I mean, you're talking what, five? Was it five?
It's, I don't know what the exact number is. I'd hate to quote a wrong number, but it is a significant power user for sure.
Heck, all that roof space could probably, solar field.
Yeah, there's, there's almost 5 million square feet of roof out there, so.
So enough acreage to do that.
To clarify to that point, the comment you made on the 25% coverage.
Those are actually essentially solar canopies over the parking spaces. That's the only specific requirement. There is a LEAP district where it has to be provided. There are other places where it encourages consideration of solar installation but doesn't require it. So we've definitely strongly encouraged them to consider it. It's not required right now, but that certainly will be a continuing conversation for sure.
Thank you.
Good.
Or Ben?
Don't worry, we're going to talk.
All right. So again, this item does have a public hearing feature. So this is docket 23, pardon me, 25-35, which is a, a request for development plan approval. And I will officially open the public hearing on this docket. Please clearly state your name for the record, limit your comments to three minutes, and please try not to repeat things we've heard in the past other than agreeing with or disagreeing with what was said, if possible, please. With that, public hearing is open. All right. Seeing no movement towards the microphone, I will officially close the public hearing on docket 25-35. So the public hearing was open and closed on 25-35. Unless there are any additional questions for Ben?
I do have one for Ben. This just has to do with LEAP standards. It's been a long time since we went through all that.
Yes.
So can you build, let's say, a private solar farm out there that could just sell their power generated to others that are in the LEAP district?
So I, I think it, it's really encouraged for self-generated power for your own site. There, there are provisions for commercial alternative energy in the LEAP district. I, yeah, I don't, I don't know logistically how it would work to sell back and forth from site to site, because I think it has to go, it has to go to the grid and then back, so it's not really a, a direct correlation, I don't think. I'm certainly not the expert on that stuff, but it, it definitely strongly encourages your own power generation for your own site, which is what Lilly's doing on both of their sites.
I'd think the same lines I'm.
Right, right.
Any additional questions? Thank you very much, Ben. So with that then, docket 25-35, I would entertain any motions. Lori, you've been working hard tonight. I'm very sorry, but you started to lean towards the mic again.
I make a motion to approve the development plan contingent on the following conditions, and I'm going to read those for this project. Tac comments, the applicant adequately addresses any remaining City of Lebanon Technical Advisory Committee comments prior to application for any building permits or site improvements. Stormwater approval, the applicant receives formal drainage approval from the City of Lebanon Board of Public Works and/or Boone County Surveyor as necessary prior to application for any building permits or site improvements. Site plan modification, the applicant shall provide solar canopies over a mini, minimum of 25% of the parking spaces within the administration building parking lot.
Thank you, Lori. So we do have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify with an aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Thank you very much for this evening, guys. It was a full evening. I think we all had a lot of information shared, which is great news. I see no other new business to come before us. Ben, do you have?
Maybe just one comment. I know we do have a number of people in the audience that were curious to hear more information about that. If you do still have questions, please let me know. I'd be happy to answer them. I can stick around for a little while tonight, or I can grab you one of my business cards. Feel free to send me an email whenever, and I can get, either get you more information or get you answers to your questions from the design team. Some of the information presented tonight is on our website already. There's links to the information, so if you just want to check out some of the stuff we've reviewed tonight, if you go to lebanon.iang.gov and then navigate to the Planning Department page, you'll find, you'll find a section about the Project Domino development plan documents, and some of this information's there if you want to peruse it on your own time, too.
Thank you, Ben. Anything else for the good of the group?
I'm going to say to Ben, I appreciate your thoroughness. It's a lot of information and great details and illustrations, so thank you for that. That helps clarify a lot of questions.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Great. So with that, maybe the favorite motion of the evening, we're not going to make Lori do this one, are we? We've got a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, please signify with an aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. We will see you at the September meeting.